All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Welcome and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Maso. I forgot to take my computer out. Not getting far without that. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Boy, is the month of February flying by or what? Alrighty, well, here we are. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and in the room, we've got Commissioners Nafisa Fai, Pam Treese, and Jerry Willie. Commissioner Rogers is excused on vacation. Good for him. Good role modeling. Alrighty, we're going to go through Board and Leadership Communication. It'll be a little bit different today because we want to do a report out from the four of us on our time at the National Association of Counties Conference in Washington DC last week. Also, there are some FYI letters in the packet. And Commissioner Willie, by the way, I did attend that Board of Forestry Special Meeting. And on a non-unanimous decision, they're moving forward with the NEPA process for the current HCP. And with the, in six more months, they're going to have a lot of more data. And so the long and short of it, it sounded to me like then they're going to say, okay, now what? But the problem does continue to be very real for the funding for counties. And when we get to the legislative update later in the agenda, that's where I'm hoping we'll have a chat about Senate Bill 90, I think it is.
Okay. Hey, thank you for doing that. I know that you were in DC and
Yeah.
kind of, you were wrapping up NACO, but thank you for sitting in on that. I've got a little bit of information that you and I've talked about as well.
Yeah, and we've got our one-on-one tomorrow, so we could, we could spend some more time talking about it. Great. Okay, who would like to go first?
Chair Harrington, can I just mention that on the agenda after the legislative update, we did program some time in for NACO updating. So if you run out of time prior to 10 o'clock, you can roll into that
Okay.
11:45 time slot.
Okay, terrific. Well, what do you want to do? Do you want to do NACO after?
Yeah, let's do NACO.
Okay, we'll do NACO afterwards then. So that'll be great. Also, on, for that whole ledge update and NACO, could you have Matt Craigie at least be on Zoom for the meeting because we're going to want to talk about the broadband program?
Yes.
We learned a lot last week, so.
We've got more later this week, so I know that we're on for another meeting, so that would be a good one.
Yep. Before I went to NACO, I was feeling a little uneasy. Oh, really? Is this a good use of county time for me and da-da-da? And I'm just so glad that I went. New, good information, good grounding, so good investment of time. Other than that, are there any other board updates that, go ahead, Commissioner Treese?
I've got a few things. Thank you and good morning. It's nice to be back. I, just quick overview, I had breakfast with Tom Vander Zandt and talking about the semiconductor task force site recommendations. I had a meeting with a constituent whose name is Steve Holgate. He's with the Climate Reality Project, and he wanted to discuss the county's climate scoping planning. I'm putting him in touch with Mark Chalkers. Thank you. Mark's already talked to him. There's been a week in between this, so thank you, Mark. Then I, let's see, I had a meeting with constituents from the French American School, which is on the corner of Miller and Cornell Road in my district and in Multnomah County. Thank, special thank you to Stephen Roberts and Megan for coming along to that meeting. They're looking at, as their school population grows, how do they handle the in-and-out parent pickups and all the things that every school goes through? But it was really helpful to have Stephen there to talk with the head of their school. I had a meeting with Mayor Tim Rosner and Counselor Kim Young down in Sherwood, just kind of a catch-up and see what's going on there, and they had talked to me. Mayor Rosner would like to get a phone call from Commissioner Willie, you, out of you, about broadband. He sits on a broadband, yep, that's you.
That's me.
He sits on a broadband committee and would like to touch base with you, so perhaps Megan can arrange that for the two of us.
Perhaps he should meet with both of us?
Okay.
Let's, and I'll just wait until after our Thursday, that, our Thursday meeting, and then we'll do that.
Right, really. Jerry was handling rural. I've been spearheading the urban.
Thank you, and I apologize for not, I guess I'm responding to what his request was. I should, I should have expanded that request. But it was good to get down to Sherwood and, and talk to people down there.
I guess you could say Chair Harrington and Commissioner Willie, both of you called Mayor.
Yeah, well, I think that they'll do it together.
Well, Tim, Mayor Rosner and I have been wanting to get together for months, and the ball's been in his court on his availability.
Okay, so maybe this will move it along.
Yeah.
Okay, so this week, I have lunch with Commissioner Jai Paul. We've been trying to catch up for a while, just to talk about things in general. IMPACT is this week, and the topics on the agenda are the consideration of the MTAC nominees, kind of an IMPACT overview for new members that are coming on to IMPACT. And then a presentation on the Growth Management Work Plan and an update on the UGB Land Exchange. So if there's any input for IMPACT, that's, that's what's going on there. I'm also working, I've talked with a couple different representatives. I'm going to be working with our team internally to have, at, at the very least, a quarterly update about what the agenda looks like for IMPACT with all of the West Side participants. They'll be invited to attend. Obviously, it's not mandatory, but for the different participants, they all think it's a good idea to do that. And because I am Vice Chair, I have a unique perspective on what the forward-looking calendar is that they may benefit from as well.
Great. And I assume that things that, as the county commission, we have to have on our radar, you'll ensure get programmed into our ruling agenda.
Absolutely.
It's a busy, busy year.
Well, I think it's also important so that you have what the perspective is. And I recognize that IMPACT is the recommendation arm on these issues, but still, I think it's important. It gives us one more opportunity to communicate throughout, throughout the West Side on key issues. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that, and I think, I think it's a good idea, and everybody that I've talked to has responded positively to it.
Great.
So I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you for going first. Commissioner Willie?
Yeah. Well, I'll try and stay within my five minutes. Towards the five-minute clock, Kevin, you, you didn't put the fight. I mean, Nafisa's really concerned about me taking
Oh, my goodness. I didn't even say anything. Willie?
Anyway, so I met with Laura Wilkinson, who is with Hampton Lumber. This is before. We went to NACO, got some more information about that, and certainly that ties in with, and I don't, I don't know if Catherine, you and I got this allocation of the forestry money that we get that goes to the special districts and all that. I, I want to share that with the rest of the commission. It's very, very interesting.
That was, that's in the packet as part of the memo, and at first I thought, oh, it's good to see this. We have, it has been shared with us two, three times over our four-plus years now. But it's one of those things I haven't really internalized very well. But when I looked at it a second time, I went, oh, yeah, that's right. The school districts and the service districts really in that list are the ones that get the majority of the funding that is allocated in the geography of Washington County. But, you know, nonetheless, it's very clear that there's been a long history of reliance upon the revenue from, from timber. And it, it's part of Oregon's economy. So that's one reason why I think no matter where you live in, in Oregon, it's important that we continue to support that industry in the broader context. So that's been my approach to this whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of things that, realizing that we have two lumber mills in, in the county as well that are certainly in jeopardy. But yeah, I'm surprised that we haven't heard more from school districts because school districts get a large portion of this timber money that we get every year. So I'll probably need to do some reaching out with that. ROMAC, I want to say shout out to Courtney Doudreson for the Public Meetings and Ethic Presentation that she gave last time we had this, which I don't know, was a week or so ago. It was very, it's always eye-opening, and especially when the majority of these participants aren't elected. So they don't live in the same life that we, same mainstream we do. So Courtney did a great job. She communicated that to her and, and kept it interesting. So I had a couple of constituent meetings. We've met with Trimat and the LUT staff on the Council Creek Rail right-of-way. Who's going to basically take, assume ownership of that and oversee that over the next 20 or 30 years? And so there'll be more on that when that decision is officially made. On COPEC, Ariann, the Executive Director, has decided to leave the organization and go a different direction. So we'll be looking for a new Executive Director for COPEC. Let's see, we had a great STEA meeting, that's November Trail Intergovernmental Agency Meeting last week out at the new fire station at, at Banks, which is out closer to actually Buxton. But, so that was a good meeting, a little catch-up, had some history there, and we're move, certainly moving ahead and looking for some grant money to kind of get our part of it, the loop with Stubbs Stewart Park. We're gonna, we'd love to get that started. Other than that, just a number of things. Mayor, thank you very much, wherever you are, Marnie, for the behavioral health training that we had last week. I was able to stay for the first hour of it, but it's always good to hear about, more about that. That's things that, that's Pam's strength, that's certainly not mine, so.
Yeah, I was sorry to miss that.
So, yeah, that was a very good thing. And then, yeah, lots of broadband, but we'll have more conversations about that. And this week on Friday, I'm going to go to Salem for the Forest Trust Lands meeting, so more on that. So between broadband and forestry. Did I make my fit five minutes?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Yes, but that's because we'll put NACO off to the side. Morning, Commissioner Fai.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, everyone. Great to be here. I think I came back from the trip and it was go, go, go. I'm looking at Brenda. Maybe next time we. So we had, I'll start off with, hold off the NACO stuff. Thank you, Brenda, for the notes. J-PAC, we had J-PAC. It was in person this time, for the first time. And I think, I like to make a correction. I think it's Chair Harrington, I think when we checked in, the idea of perhaps holding the J-PAC meeting at the zoo. So now that's off the table, so we're always going to have it at the Metro Building. I think in our conversation, you called it, you're, we'll be meeting, I know.
A little bit hoping for you to go.
But we're, we're in a, it's a nice, actually, building too, so.
Well, and I want to thank you for having really consistent attendance there, so as your alternate, I haven't had to.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Get up extra early and go.
Don't jinx it. Especially now that it's in person. But I, it was a, it was a good ride. It's actually, you know, with transportation and so you're always, it's good to be on the road when you're heading to a transportation commission, conversations. Nothing too serious or too too important to bring to our board. The only auction item that was on, on the agenda for J-PAC that I'd like you all to be aware of, the Burnside Bridge Earthquake Readiness Project is moving forward, and they finally came with an alternative approach to J-PAC for an endorsement only. And some of the conversations, obviously, the interstate bridge is going to need some funding. The Burnside Bridge is going to need some funding, so a lot of the conversation was how to make sure we're not competing for the same buckets of money? And how do we align when we're asking for money? So that was the only thing. Everything else was informational, and I could certainly share the notes offline. Is that my time? Okay. The other conversation that I like, that I just want to extend my gratitude to Stephen and his team, LUT, is I had a conversation with quite a bit of residents that live on Millah Hill Road, just off of Farmington. And a lot of the residents are seeing a lot of development go up in that neighborhood, yet there's no road development going on. So they were concerned, what's going on in Washington County? How are you going to develop the sidewalk? And what are you, obviously, we don't have money to do sidewalk developments, and so it was good to meet with them in person and, and then to meet with our staff to strategize. What are some options and some suggestions to submit to the, to, to start that conversation? So thank you, Stephen, and to your team. It went really well. I think it calmed a lot of the residents' nerves. And to be continued. I'll keep you posted what comes out of it. I think we're moving forward with some of the strategies that LUT suggested. And then when, on a fun topic, I had the honor of attending, thank you, Mark Chalkers, Clean Water Services Multicultural Committee and the Gender Equity Network Committee. I had, I had a gathering between 15 to 20 people last week, and it was a, there was a delicious potluck. And I was invited to talk about equity, representation, inclusion in public service, and, and then also, obviously, my story around, you know. So it was a really good discussion. People had a lot of really good questions and a lot of really great ideas. And so many smart people that were working with us. Honestly, I was intimidated, you know, and, and they made sure. You know, I'm used to being called now, I guess, or if it's not Nafisa, I'm used to hearing Commissioner Fai. And it was nice. Everyone called me Director Fai, so I really appreciated, you know, clean water stays on their talking points. It was good. Thank you for inviting me, and I look forward to keeping that conversation going. And you've, you've got really good group of people who are trying to figure out how to problem-solve internally. And look at that. I turn it to you, Chair Harrington.
Great, thank you very much. There were a couple of things that occurred the latter part of the week before the NACO trip, and one of those was the monthly Chair Mayor's meeting. I had sent them quite a bit of information on the context of our budget, as well as our ARPA conversations, and also made sure that they had the, the WCCLS memo as well. And some of the cities are running up against budget challenges as well. So it is not an uncommon problem, this being the budget system, or budget season, excuse me. There was also the monthly Supportive Housing Services Tri-County Planning Body meeting. We've continued to move forward on discussion and recommendations for areas to invest the regional funding in regional infrastructure, think soft infrastructure, common approaches to continue to address our regional homeless problem. So those meetings have been in person, so I continue to hoof it in there to do my part. This Thursday night, we have our town hall in the evening. It looks like it'll be the four of us. Thank you. I'm a little sad you're not on vacation.
Yeah, I was going to announce that. Thank you for reminding me. I'm not going on vacation.
I look forward to your going another time, so it'll be great to have the four of us there. Which I was sharing with Ms. Angie, the articles in the media on the, the media briefings on our budget is starting to generate some community response. And so what I have gotten out of emails and conversations I've had is that in that presentation, we need to help folks understand a little bit more what the process is, right? We're in the stage of gathering data, doing what-if scenarios internally and with our partners, but there won't be a proposed budget until the latter part of April. So I really appreciate how much, how we've advanced our engagement to help build that knowledge. Picking one for the team this week and participating in the Tri-County Cultural Planning Meeting. Then on Friday, I was planning on going down to Salem for the FTLAC meeting.
Is that, is, can we do it Zoom if?
I think so, but I thought I would go down in person for this one. I think leading up, well, for a couple of reasons. One is because from the AOC Conference, we talked with Mike Wilson about having our district meeting, our FTLAC district meet on the HCP/FMP before the September milestone. And so Kevin set that meeting up with our three county commissions, Clackamas, Columbia, and Washington. So I figured, since they're going to be hoofing it up here, I should at least do it down there. But also because I don't think that our colleagues in the more rural counties understand or have really had the opportunity to hear from me that I want Oregon to continue to have a healthy timber industry. I also want to make sure we're doing our part for the biosphere. And I don't know what the right balance is. That's where I lean into the process to figure this out together. So, so I just figured it was time.
You probably haven't directly communicated your perspective like you just described it, but they are hearing that and they appreciate it. So it would be good for you to communicate to that directly, but they absolutely know that you, you, you weighed in and have the same concerns.
Yeah. And then we're going to talk about the NACO meeting later. I've learned a lot more about the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act and the broadband opportunity we do not want to miss for our residents. Really a once-in-a-lifetime investment. And so towards that end, I think, for the March Chair Mayor's meeting, which is Monday, March 20th, we should look at how to get prepared to use that and make sure we're all mobilized. And we may need to exert our influence across the region as well. Particularly, I, I see those dollars as being, oops, I'm way over time. Somebody should have called time.
You're only four seconds.
Oh, okay, but you might raise it at IMPACT as well because we want to make sure for all of our kids, all of our seniors, all of our economically disadvantaged folks that we're not letting that funding opportunity go by. I think Multnomah County's moving forward with this. So we can confirm that, but I don't know where Clackamas County is yet, so I'll check in with Chair Smith on that too. So we'll see. But that's come up in a much bigger way, and I think it's going to be something added to our board initiatives now that we know the nature of that funding opportunity. Anyway, don't let me forget to check in on the formal agenda, so. Leadership communication. Ms. Angie?
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. So let me start with an exciting announcement. I'm thrilled to announce the appointment of Nate Goran as our next Director of Washington County Community Corrections. Nate will begin his role on April 17th after serving eight years as the Director of Community Corrections in Josephine County. Prior to that, he served at Jackson County for more than 14 years in multiple roles, including juvenile probation officer, senior adult parole probation officer, and program manager. So he has really a depth of experience coming to Washington County.
I'm very excited. That was a great interview process, so thank you to you and your team on that.
Yeah, I, I do want to express appreciation for Erin Calvert's leadership in that process in both juvenile and community corrections. It's not just about the interview process, it's getting input upfront, and so getting input from the department employees into the needs of a director and how that is used to build the profile in addition to our community-based organizations we partner with in both community corrections and juvenile. So we're trying to use that as our recruitment process, just as your board had seen with the recruitment of the Assistant County Administrators as we continue to fill our key leadership positions here at the county. I do also, in this announcement, look forward to paying recognition to our current community direct, Corrections Director, Steve Berger, who will retire after 36 years of public service, 24 of which were at Washington County. Steve has one of those stories that he worked for Washington County and then left the county and then came back to serve as our Director here. We have been incredibly well-served by Steve's leadership, depth of experience, and just kind of steady posture and executive leadership. He has also really brought a statewide perspective into our community corrections legislative work. And it's exciting because Nate is going to bring that same perspective here to Washington County, which is really needed as our community corrections work truly is a county-state funded partnership model.
My interest in public safety, specifically community corrections, juvenile justice, is a result of Steve Berger and Lynn Schroeder. Folks know, I didn't campaign on public safety, but boy, do I spend time on it. So, yeah, yeah.
And I, we have a natural hazard mitigation plan online open house coming up, and so I would welcome your board's help in spreading the word about the National Hazard, Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan Open House. Hazard mitigation work that is done before a disaster strikes to help lessen impacts of life, property, and the environment. Washington County Department of Emergency Management developed a plan in partnership with cities of Beaverton, Cornelius, Forest Grove, Hillsborough, North Plains, Sherwood, and Targert in addition to our Clean Water Services, Twalatin Hills Parks and Rec District, and Twalatin Valley Water District. Emergency management will be hosting the online open house, including a brief survey for public to provide feedback until March 5th. Information about the open house is available on our website.
Quick question on that, and it's more of a, an action item to follow up on. I would really appreciate a two-liner on why members of our community should care. And I, I heard what you said about lessening the impact, but that doesn't really tell me how might that apply to my individual life and my life in the context of the community that I'm part of? And so that's what I'm And so that's what I'm struggling with a little bit. I know it's foundational and that we as an agency rely upon these plans, but I'm still at a loss for how to communicate that. So that's, I could use some help.
Yeah, we can get the board today a one-to-two sentence kind of talking point. Also, to forecast ahead, your board will be receiving, based on your request, a deeper dive into the emergency management and the array of plans that we need to manage as an emergency management body will be part of that presentation. So I think that comment is is helpful because we can further talk about how we bring to life the important plans that we need to develop and then also manage on behalf of the community.
Yeah, and so looking ahead towards that, it will be helpful to me to understand what kind of plans or processes you do that are just administrative and what ones we as a board have to adopt and take action on as well. I don't know. It's a big black box to me right now. Well, maybe it's only a little box. I don't know. We'll find out.
And continuing to build out our budget communications plan, last Tuesday, CFO Greg Munn and I met with our city and special district partners to discuss our budget situation and the challenges that we have at Washington County. And it was a really good conversation. There were a variety of different positions represented, so ranging from city managers to assistant city managers to CFOs to budget managers to human resources managers that attended and also library district, our library directors too. In the afternoon, we met with our, some of our community-based organizations and held the same conversation. So this is the same information that your board has received in multiple venues. And so we're continuing to be transparent and open and welcome questions and feedback from our partners. It does take some time to walk through just what is SIP. So many of the questions your board has had or employees have had are the same questions that our cities have or our CBOs. So we continue to learn and how to refine in a concise manner the complexities of our budget.
Which reminds me, before our our town hall this Thursday, I need to re-review the frequently asked questions so that that's present in my mind.
We will resend the frequently asked questions to the board, so you have those at your fingertips.
And hello, Catherine, it's Tuesday. That's only two days away.
It is only two days. And that concludes my update.
So I asked Ms. Angie, was it quiet at all last week with four of us gone? And she said, oh, no.
Maybe that's due to the the emails and the texts that the four of us sent back.
I suspect that there was a flurry from that respect. I didn't text you. I didn't text her. Ah, but how about emails? See, I caught her on that one. Good morning, Mr. Carr.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. I wanted to take a minute to ask for, I guess, direction to sign on to an amicus brief in the United States Supreme Court. I put this in the hot sheet on Friday, but it was Friday and I'm not sure you've all read it. The case is United States against Hanson. And it's a challenge to a USC 1324, which is a federal statute that prohibits anybody from inducing or encouraging the resident, the entry or residence of illegal immigrants into the United States. The boot, the brief is on behalf of local governments. I've signed on to a similar brief in a previous case challenging a USC 1324 because the cha, the challenge is that the wording of encouraging residents could be applied and has been threatened to be applied against local governments that provide routine services to people regardless of their immigration status. So the, and that's the focus of the brief. The brief does not get into immigration policy. It's entirely about local, the effect on local governments and policies trying to support their own communities. So as I said, I signed on at my last job and they've asked me to sign on again. It would be signed up for Washington County. We don't have a process for signing on to amicus briefs here. The legislative agenda says that I can sign on to anything that's covered in legislative agenda. There's nothing in there that I think would cover this. So I'm asking for for direction on whether or not we can sign on. And I think I should probably bring something on a consent agenda if you direct me to go ahead and do this to just ratify that so that there's a clear record that you've approved. But if you don't approve, that's fine as well. The last time, there were about 30 local governments that signed on.
Well, my, my, my interest in having, having Washington County sign on is specifically related to our Health and Human Services side of our portfolio and making sure that we're ensuring public health, for example. And if if someone is residing in our community and falls into homelessness or has a child, I want to make sure that we're not leaving that child behind and making sure that there's proper nutrition. And then there's the Head Start program as well. So it's not a matter of encouraging someone to come, but rather, once they are here, being able to provide the humane services that we offer every resident to ensure that we are a healthy and safe community. So it's much like having enabling legislation versus mandating legislation, right? So that's where I'm coming from in ensuring that local governments continue to have that flexibility. So I think process-wise, having, you bring it to the consent agenda, sounds like a good approach to me. But that's, having read the information that you provided, that's what my thinking is. Colleagues, what are your thoughts?
From my perspective, I'm in support of doing that work. And while I agree with the chair, I also feel that we're the most diverse county in the state. I think it's our responsibility to take, to promote this type of discussion. So I would support that.
Yeah, I I think you have my thumbs up, Tom. And I was wondering, is there more that we should be doing other than to ratify this? Like, what would you recommend?
So I don't think right now there's a great risk that the federal government's going to enforce. The last administration threatened to enforce the the law against local governments. Didn't do it, but there was a big threat. And that was when the last discussion of this came up and when this case came up. The current administration isn't taking the same approach, but my worry is the future. I I don't know what else we should do except what we're doing now, which is I think we have sound policies for treating everyone fairly, including, as the chair says, Health and Human Services, but also the Sheriff's Office. There's, there's a lot of folks who who deal with people without regard to their, their, their immigration status. And I think that's important. So the, the, I was frequently asked to sign on to amicus briefs in my last job, and they just found me with this one. So I suspect we will get additional requests in the future.
Would this, like, if this county was a sanctuary county, would that be any, would that offer protective barrier?
So I I've actually drafted two sanctuary city ordinances, and so I've worked for them before. It, it, it is a symbolic gesture. A county or local government can't violate federal law, so you have to comply with federal law. But it's an important symbolic gesture. And as I said, there, there are two that I've worked on. And so I have a template that we could use if that's something you're interested in. But it does create a certain level of, of targeting. The last administration threatened to defund sanctuary jurisdictions. And there was, there was, there's a federal Department of Justice grant where they weren't giving the funds to local governments if you were a sanctuary jurisdiction. So there are consequences. As I said, it doesn't really have any effect because we're not gonna do anything illegal in Washington County, and we do support all of our residents. So I think it's a policy consideration for you. And as I said, I can provide you with a draft because I have to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're really.
Yeah, I am just not reading it. I apologize. I did not read this hot sheet until just now. So I guess I'm gonna be neutral on this until I do more reading on this thing, but you've got three votes, so.
Yep.
I think that's your green light to go, so.
Thank you all. Well, I will.
And if I have any questions, someone, I'll definitely get back to you. I apologize. I didn't do my homework.
Well, I sent it out on Friday afternoon. It's been a long wait. All right. Thank you, everybody. That's me.
Diane, thank you. And good morning, Chair Harrington and Clean Water Services Board of Directors. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to Director Phi for spending time with the multicultural and gender equity network groups. You really touched their hearts and their minds is what they're telling us and that you really inspired this very thoughtful group of leaders at Clean Water Services. So thank you very much. The second one is an announcement. DEQ awarded Clean Water Services a million dollars in ARPA grants to help low and moderate income homeowners to repair, replace, maintain, or decommission their septic tanks so they can connect to the public sewer system. And I really want to give a shout out to Shannon Wilson's team and at the county's Office of Community Development. They manage the sanitarian program and they're gonna be working directly with us. So the funds have to be expended by June 30th, the 2024. So we're gonna hop on that and and bring these services to folks who are in need.
Diane, can I ask a quick question on that? So do we, do we know how many septic tanks we have?
Yes, we always have this question and it goes down year by year. It's probably on the order of several thousand people still. So most people who are on septic tanks want to stay on septic tanks. But when the failure happens, it happens rapidly and it creates these needs for reimbursement districts or local improvement districts. And then you have neighbors sort of against neighbors because one neighbor has the problem. So this would really help us to not only advance where there's a sewer and someone needs to connect and they can't afford it, or when there's a need for a sewer line to be put in place. So we're very thankful.
So this funding would allow Clean Water Services to provide that main line and then also help with connectivity.
Yeah, primarily, it's a solution for the homeowner themselves, so they can connect. So it marries up with our reimbursement district program. Yeah, yeah, thank you. The third item, I'm gonna call Mark Jockers and Tracy Rainey forward. There's a state funding opportunity for Fern Hill that will really help us advance Fern Hill's master plan as it relates to the public amenities, the education and outreach. That's a requirement of our MPDS permit that we have a public education outreach to talk about the importance of these nature-based solutions to solve our regulatory compliance challenges. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mark and Tracy.
And Commissioners, I would just like to highlight you have an email in your inbox from Mark on this topic.
Giving you all of like 12 hours notice on this. But we're always on tight timelines when we're working with the legislature and the work that Tracy's doing down in Salem. We started working with Representative McLean last fall to kind of navigate opportunities to secure funding out at, out at Fern Hill. And originally, we were looking at something called the Oregon Parks and Recreation District Local Government Grant Program. Turned out that that we as a county service district are not qualified for that. She offered to introduce a bill related to to change those qualifications. It got a little complicated. So in talking to some of our, some of our stakeholders, parks, districts, and pieces like that, they suggested that we just actually seek a direct funding request. It's lottery dollars. So this is lottery funds, and there's 15% of the lottery funds that are dedicated to parks and natural resource pieces there. We vetted this closely with the Washington County Government Affairs staff as well to make sure that we were not competing against any of the county's funding pots related to that. And before we moved forward, we talked to the chair about this recently. We wanted to come to you before Diane signs that letter. So would be, any questions you have for Tracy or I on that?
Yeah, I I'll just share that I had some questions about this opportunity and your letter really helped me considerably in that regard. But also, I had the opportunity to chat with Mark before our meeting started today to better understand the master plan for this. And also, since I'm directionally challenged, where this property was relative to the Fern Hill wetland that I know today. He reminded me of Ripple. I had also reminded myself about further land. No, that's Jackson Bottom, Catherine. See? Directionally challenged. So it's just all been really helpful information. So I saw Commissioner Treece put her thumb up. I know I'm thumbs up on it. You've got thumbs up and head nod, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anytime we can get state's money, that's.
My report for today. Could I, could I just jump in? One thing I forgot to mention is I will be attending the Forest Grove and Cornelius State of the City next, next Monday.
Oh, that one got by me.
Yeah, that's.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, it's next Monday.
Joint Chamber. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay, formal agenda. Come on, Catherine. So we have three different action items on the agenda today. And I asked Mr. Carr if, if our staff could provide us with a draft motion when it comes to the EMS program one, mostly because I want to make sure I know what our action is for today. And as I looked at the package yesterday, I got a little tripped up, so.
I was just reading Brad's draft.
Okay, terrific. Okay, great.
So a good call on that chair because the selection of best proposal last slide, I was confused.
Yeah. Well, that, and I want to make sure if the motion needs to also about the, what was the slide? The notice of whatever.
No.
Notice of intent to award.
That's it. Yep.
Okay.
So I want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah.
Right? Because the staff did a great job of having a comprehensive process. So we knew what the RFP would include, the responses to the RFP and the evaluations and whatnot. So we'll have something in our inbox when we get into the meeting. So just be on the lookout for that. Okay? Terrific. Are there any other questions? Our, our staff is hoping that will be done within an hour so that we can reconvene our work session here at 11:50. Great. So also, depending upon how many people we have during testimony, I might just have this on the action items, have the staff report, then get public input, and then our deliberation so that our speakers have the opportunity of hearing the presentation as well because sometimes that will address people's questions. So. Terrific. Anything else before we break for our meeting? Okay, we'll see in the auditorium in, at 10 o'clock. Thank you.